Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Abir Al-Sadoun, joining you from Sydney to chair a session 11 in artificial intelligence, applied cognitive computing. We have six papers will be presented in this session this afternoon. It will be great if you all please turn your computer on to make a live session. Okay, we'll start with the first presenter. The paper title is "A computational model to account subjectivity into natural language processing."
Okay, so thank you for the introduction. My name is Carlo Lipicci and I'm going to entertain you for the next fifteen-plus minutes on what I call the room theory. So let me start sharing my screen. And let me go on my PowerPoint here. Alright, so the goal of my research in this case is to determine the subjectivity or account the subjectivity in the process of analyzing text. My background is in math and system engineering. I'm not an expert in linguistics, but if you want to do anything in natural language processing at a certain point, you need to get at least the basics. So what I realized working the last few years on NLP, natural language processing, is that the language is evolving rapidly and more and more rapidly as the communication in the society is becoming more intense and we are all more connected and there is a sort of amplification of something that obviously was going on since the very beginning of the language or languages in general. Communications are becoming shorter, less structured, more chopped, more context-dependent. Even when we have media where we can express ourselves the way we want, meaning with all the words that we want to use, we tend to use less words. And on the reader's side, we tend to read not much of what has been communicated. That means that it's more difficult today to use predefined structures. So syntax is not particularly used. Grammars, unfortunately, we all know that is not exactly followed. Taxonomies, anthologies, they obviously could be used, but the limitation is that they would need to be updated more and more. So this supervised approach that can be represented with the rule-based approach somehow related to taxonomies has some limitations because, as I said before, the language is changing constantly and with the rate that is increasing, language is biased. So it's biased in ways that are not avoidable. So you are the odor of the text and it's you. So it's your point of view, whatever you are saying. But, and I mean, if you have a text, you cannot do much for that. But then you have also a bias from the reader standpoint, meaning what I read is different from someone else's reading. And then if you use natural language processing, automatic language processing, you have a third bias that is in the algorithm that you are using. If you have a predefined structure in the analysis, the bias is embedded in this structure. Most of the problems that I had, that I wanted to solve in NLP were related to extracting metrics. Metrics to have a sort of independent measurable point of view. So Newton, if you cannot measure, you cannot know. Extracting metrics from text can be challenging. If the metrics are just statistical, things are relatively easy. But if you want to get semantic metrics, that's a completely different story. Also, because when you have semantic in general, you have the subjectivity, because my semantic is different from someone else's semantic. The example that I normally use in those cases, we wear, and this is in the paper by the way, if you want to analyze emotions, one of the shades of joy is ecstasy. But ecstasy has a quite different meaning. If you are a narcotic officer, so a drug dealer, you are a Vatican scholar or a psychologist. So that's an example of how context-dependent texts can be. To address this subjectivity, I recalled my early days in artificial intelligence. I've worked in this area since 1986. At that time, Marvin Minsky and Noam Chomsky were two of the leading names in this area. Marvin Minsky represented a theory, naming it Framework Theory, that was originally created several years before as a schema theory. The way it was used to present it was with an example. If you enter a physical room, we know, you know right away if it's a bedroom, a bathroom, a living room, a dining room, whatever. And this is not because there is a label saying this is a bathroom, but because you know because it's in your mental framework. So I use this room metaphor or example to call this theory the room theory. So the added value is the computational layer that I added to Marvin Minsky Framework Theory. Basically, from the text, from large corpora, you extract a computational representation and that would be the computational representation, the room, that is a computational representation of the domain. That can be a knowledge or can be just a domain. This is giving a lot of flexibility in the way you read the text. So a couple of ways to see this room theory. So one is a functional schema. So you have a room representing the domain that you are considering. Has been transformed, is a corpus transformed into a matrix. Then you have the documents that you want to analyze and you have a benchmark defining what you are looking for. Let's say emotions. Then you have a list of emotions and all the possible synonyms and misspelled way to say the same words. And you basically do a sort, or you take each word here, each word here, and then you do a sort of lookup. You extract the vectors that you have in the matrix and you do the comparison. By the proximity, you have the proximity of the individual words and iterating, you have the proximity for the entire document or documents that you are analyzing. In more mathematical terms, you basically start with the corpus. You do a vectorization, you transform the corpus in a list of vectors and this is basically what you have here. And then you have your benchmark word, emotions or whatever it is. You have the text that you want to evaluate and you basically take each word from the text that you want to evaluate, each word from the benchmark. You do a lookup in the matrix representing the corpus and you calculate the distance. And then eventually you add the weights and then you have at the very end the distance between words. Doing a summation, sometimes it's not just a summation, but from the functional standpoint, you do a summation and then you normalize and then you have all the similarity between each word that is part of the benchmark and the document. Then things can become obviously more complex than that. You need to define what you mean for word. Word is not a single word, but it can be n-grams. So you need to do the n-gramming and then you need to standardize the process. So some of the application, so those are some of the questions. Given the knowledge of a domain and a set of criteria, what is the best choice? So DSS? Or what this text is telling to me? Assuming that you have me represented as a knowledge base. A couple of examples that are the two projects that basically sponsored this approach. One, both are from the Department of Defense. The first one is a threat analysis. Basically, the idea is to combine what they already traditionally have, that is the capability-based forecast for the performance of the weapons and the threats that are happening in the world. They didn't have anything to analyze the threats and this is basically a threat analysis. We approached the problem developing two systems. One, that is a decision support system. Basically, we defined the key risk elements. We defined the competitions. And then based on the text that is coming from three sources, news, patents and papers, we determined the risk factor, I mean, the threats that can change the scenario for the competitive market, market or competition, whatever it is. We use the proxy domain that was the security companies. But it could be something different. The second component is technology monitoring and forecast. It's a sort of radar screen for future technologies. The DoD can be prepared for technologies that are happening now, but may not be as much prepared for technologies that are upcoming. Some of the details. We worked for two years on this project with about 20 people, about 12,000 lines of code, about two and a quarter million documents. And that was, I mean, the inside the system. On the radar screen for the new technologies. So the questions, what are the technologies that are coming? How different they are from the past? What is the life cycle of existing technologies? Second project is for the Defense Acquisition University and the idea was to replicate the knowledge of contracting officers to classify requests that the DoD can receive. Requests can be pen and pencils or can be something definitely more on the defense side. Billion dollar, hundred dollar. Working with the sponsor, we identify the keyword for contract types. There were 15 different contract types. The classification is not black and white, a simple if then else wouldn't work. So we basically recreated the knowledge of a contracting officer, putting together models operand and literature. And basically, we consider 10 different contract types and changing the size of the room, we changed the results in a dramatic way. The measurement for how successful the system is was how much ability the system has to differentiate the different contract types. So this is with the initial knowledge base and this is with the final knowledge base. Basically, you have a bunch of documents, types of contract and each one has a classification in terms of how much each contract type is covering each of the document. And then you have the one with the highest score that will go here. We are working on a sort of sandbox. So we have three projects we are working on. One is predicting the future. So the future cannot be predicted, but some future can be estimated if you consider technology. In technologies, you don't have big jumps. So the technologies that we are using now are a sort of an evolution or a combination of technologies from the past. So we had two approaches. One is using network theory. We analyzed the network from, I mean, from the 2 million documents over several years. Each year you have a network representing the aggregation of technologies. This is changing in time. You do a sort of an extrapolation and you have a possible network for the technology in the future. And the second, yeah, four minutes. And the second is basic, is based on linear algebra. Second approach, second project is extracting formal structure in automatic way from text. The third, that is something that I like a lot, is basically generating my digital twin. So we are more and more digital. We are more and more collecting digital information. We can think about put together those digital theoretical corpus and extract a room representing our knowledge and then use it for whatever is the use that we want to do. For example, instead of Facebook Knowledge Book or something that can help people with neurological degenerative disease to have a sort of support. That's ending my presentation. Just to conclude everything, I'm working on two labs. So this is sort of an official one, is an NLP lab. That's the URL. And I'm also the director within the Stevens Institute of Technology of the Center for Complex Systems and Enterprises. And we are focused on four areas. One of them is artificial intelligence, machine learning and NLP. And I am the one focusing on that. So it's 19 minutes. Sorry if I didn't leave more time for questions, but I would be more than happy to take it.
Thank you so much for such a great presentation, Carlo. Is there any question, please? Okay, thank you. Just, we're going to move to the next speaker. But before I start with the next speaker, just a kind reminder, please, to manage your presentation within 15 minutes. Then we keep five minutes for asking questions. Thank you so much. Next speaker for the paper, "Least squares estimation of circuit element values from measured voltage and current waveforms." Charles, you can start.
Yes, I'm ready here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the introduction. Okay, now, do you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right, thank you. This is Charles Kim. I'm a professor in electrical engineering and computer science at Harvard University, which is located in Washington DC. And my title today is "Least squares estimation of circuit element values from measured voltages and current waveforms." As the title implies, this is application of statistical estimation into a real problem solved. So in this presentation, I'm going to talk about what problem I'm going to solve. It's a nutshell. This is resistance inductance in one equation. I have two unknowns, resistance inductance, but I have only one equation. How do I find or an error? So, and I'm going to talk about conventional approaches. And then I propose the well-known least square estimation. And I'm going to formulate with sample the data of voltage and current to find resistance inductance. Then to test, validate the approach, I made a circuit model with ATIS files and waveforms generated under different conditions of voltage and current and with no resistance inductance. Then I evaluate this least square error approaches with the generated signals. And after that, I'm going to do the same thing with the rear power signal from rear power company. Then I conclude my presentation. So what is the problem? The problem here is that we have a circuit. Any circuit, complex or simplified, a circuit has voltage and current. And then it also has impedance or inductance or resistance. Combine together resistance and inductance. And when we have inductance capacitance, especially when we have faulted condition in power substational power system, we have a fourth current loop here. And then current flows through this line. The line has two components, resistance component and inductance component. And the signal looks like this, very short duration. When the signal, signals were long, there are a lot of many different approaches to solve this kind of problem. The problem here is when we know resistance inductance, we know the distance from power substation to this faulted location. So we can easily find the location and we can do preventive measure or maintenance to reduce down the power outage durations. So from here, the fundamental time domain equation is very simple. First order differential equation made by current times resistance, inductance times derivative of current and makes voltage. So we have one simple equation, but the problem is two unknowns. That's the major, what the hurdle for solving this kind of problem. So what are the conventional approaches? One approach, approach one is, okay, since resistance in, in the, in the real practical system, inductance is much bigger than resistance. Why don't we drop resistance from the equation? So we drop the first term and we have only one term equation of inductance. So inductance is given by voltage over derivative of current. So we can make out this one from the sample, the voltage and sample the current. Of course, this is inaccurate when elimination or ignorance of resistance is not allowed, especially underground cable cases. What about the second approach? Second approach here is kind of manipulating the evaluation time. When you have this equation with the two unknowns, we want to eliminate this first term by measuring this value when the current value is zero. So want to find this I over T is zero. At that time, when, when we evaluate voltage and this term, we can find inductance. So the other manipulation is, hey, why don't we do find the derivative of current is zero? At a certain time, if this is zero, the second term disappears, then we can find Rf. In theory, it looks good, but exact time is difficult and there may not be a time of I T goes zero or D I D T over I T is zero. So this is not also viable solution when we solve two unknowns in one equation. So that's why we have here a new solution approach. Instead of writing differential equation and I changed to into difference equation. So it's the same, right? Derivative is what difference between two values separated by sampling time in this case, delta T. So when I rearrange this difference equation, I have L and then I at T plus delta T and R delta T minus L and with I in the next time step and voltage in next time step. So we can easily convert this way to matrix format so that I T plus delta T occupies first column and I over T is second column. And we have a two, what variables, L and R are our, okay, two unknowns. So these are our targets. And right hand side, we have voltage measured at time T multiplied by the sampling period. So if we have m number of samples, when we have voltage and current waveforms, we do not use just one, one point at a given time. Instead, we will, okay, sample entire cycle or half cycle. So then we sample, let's say, m number of samples in voltage and current. Then put, put them all into matrix. So starting from here, I T plus delta T to all the way to I T plus m times delta T for the first column. Second column is I over T, okay, one step behind and then all the way to T plus m minus one delta T. And this second part doesn't change. And then right hand side, we sample also m number of voltages starting from B T to all the way to T plus m minus n delta T. Now, if you look at this one, a left side of matrix, you can say X. Y is a constant beta. And then Y side, what is, you can say Y. Then we have realized linear equation X beta times Y. Then, it's simple enough to find the beta is X inverse times Y if it is a very good exact equations. But since we have m number of samples, which means it is over-determined equations. Now we have two unknowns, now m equations instead of just one equation which we started with. So now, in this case, by least square estimation, the estimation beta is X transpose X, as we know, inverse times X transpose times Y. So by this calculation, our beta is L in the first row, first row. And the second row is R times delta T minus L. So L, unknown, one of the unknowns is given by the first element of beta and the R is first and second element divided by delta T. We can find L and R. So we can find L over R by measuring m number of samples of voltage and current. So now this is a more like a flow chart, how we move on that. So now we have a voltage and current coming in and we sample n samples, m samples, doesn't matter. And then I T zero to delta T from I T zero, they makes X one first column, X two second column. And then this one, we, it becomes Y. So X and Y put together into least square estimates. We have now beta and then beta one is L. Beta zero plus beta one divided by sampling time. And then beta one is error, beta zero plus beta one divided by sampling time. Delta T becomes R. So it's quite straightforward. Okay, now this is a circuit model made with ATIS files. So this is pretty close to rear power system and distribution network with a tank kilovolt source from power station to the load. So at certain point, we staged the fault for what, for about one cycle. So here, red one is voltage and the green one is current. So when you have a fault, we have very high cut. So we're going to sample voltage and current. And then we'll try to find this R and error, which will indicate the distance from point A to a four to the location. So first, we want to try to do normal state, if normal works. So in this case, we pick just a half cycle of fault. So each is a 64 samples. So true value of error are this much, true value of R and this much. Now we applied this scale error method and we found this beta. So first one is L, right? So L is 0.698. You think they are that close? Yeah, they are very close. And then, but resistance is slightly higher than the true value, but it's quite acceptable for normal case. Now, four to the case, four to form here. And then true value of four, when you have a four inductance is this very small handling. And then R is also very small, 0.410. Now by this least scale error method, and then we found inductance is 0001421. It's almost identical. We can't believe, I cannot believe this close to this true value. And then resistance is slightly a bit 0.4291, but not very, okay, what a pause, as you know. Now, uh, we tried to have a different four locations. So we have R three, L three, uh, different combinations means the different locations where force or stages using ATIS file circuit model. Then we compared by LS, uh, least scale error method with the true values. So now we compared with error for resistance and error and inductance in terms of percentage points. So R error is around, okay, uh, three to six percent error. L is about less than one percent error here. So performance of inductance estimation is very good, very okay. But R is just slightly lower than that for inductance. But the overall least error performance is quite acceptable. Okay, so now this is with the rear case. So we, uh, received this data from, uh, power company, which experienced this kind of self clearing fault. Normal, then if something happens, but it's a separate clear back to normal, as if nothing happened. So this is very difficult to find. If you find this kind of location, can, we can fix and change before the actual fault occurs. So this is great and tremendous advantage if we can find the location. So here, this is again 12 kV distribution system, rear power system. So they did a sample, 128 samples per cycle. So it's the same thing. So we use a half number. So we use a 64 samples in our least scale error approach. True value they provide us is L is 0.4109 and R they didn't provide. So, but we put all this data into, uh, and then sample them and put it into this gear method. And then we found the beta here and beta here is very, very close, right? So probably you can, you can accept this easily. And then since R is not known, is, you cannot judge how good this will be. But I guess it's not very far away from the actual true locations. So this is my conclusions. Okay, so we have sub cycle four location issues. It's not issues, but if you do, we have a great and tremendous advantage of finding and locating fixing force before the actual outage occurs. But the problem is in doing so, we have only one equation with the two variables. So here, uh, we, we are using the traditional least scarce estimation with a sample of data, only half a cycle sample supplied. And then we could locate the fourth location, I mean, the, uh, the future fault. So this is more like a preemptive for the location. So by, by ATIS by circuit model and simulation, we test with the generate data and also with real data. And performance is quite good, especially, uh, inductance estimation is quite, uh, I mean, very good. It's really, really excellent. But R is also good and acceptance. Of course, this is, it doesn't tell the, this approach works and always. But I hope this works. So our plan is to get, collect the more rear self creating fault waveforms and have, okay, do more evaluation and testing. Thank you very much.
Thanks for such an amazing presentation, Charles. Um, is there any question? Okay, Charles, can you please stop sharing your screen if you don't mind? And we can move to the next paper.
Thank you very much.
All things. Uh, we going to move to a paper, the third paper, avoiding catastrophic forgetting with short-term memory during continual learning. So the presenter, James, uh, you can start, James.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes, all good. Go ahead.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. So hello, everyone. Um, my name is Jim Regia. I am one of the AI faculty at the University of Maryland. I'm part of a research group that is not just at Maryland, but also at Syracuse University. And it includes Garrett Katz, Greg Davis and Rodolfo Gentile, the co-authors on, on this presentation. The area we're working in, the problem we're addressing is the issue of how you develop neural networks that can simulate high-level cognitive mechanisms in people. I mean, we're interested in robotics and more generally, but we're trying to emulate the highest levels of cognition. And in doing this, one of the things that came out of the work was something that we call the store erase learning rule. It's a, actually a simple idea. The idea is that is you store information, you simultaneously erase related information that, that you don't need. Okay? And I'll explain the details as we go along. The, um, topic that I'm talking about today then is our idea that this could help us avoid catastrophic forgetting, okay, in short-term memory. By short-term memory, I mean what psychologists call working memory. And I'll, I'll explain that in, in just a minute, if you're not familiar with it. We're particularly interested in lifelong learning, continual learning in a neural network. Sorry. Um, and again, I'll explain that. I'm hearing somebody else talking. Is that me or? So, okay, um, what's the overall problem we're addressing? The thing is that with neural networks today, contemporary neural nets, even with deep learning, okay, these systems are not competitive with traditional symbolic AI for highest levels of cognitive processing. And by that, I mean things like deductive or abductive reasoning, goal-directed problem-solving, planning, cognitive control, things of this nature. And our hypothesis is that one of the main reasons for this is that these neural models have very limited working memory abilities. Okay, this is part of the problem and that programmable neural networks are a possible solution. So let me start with a little background. What do we mean by working memory? As you may know, psychologists divide memory up into different types. Usually, most people, when, when they talk about memory are interested in long-term memory. Okay, memories lasting days to years and in people. And as you can see here, this is divided into various types and all of which has just enormous capacity to store information. What we're interested in instead is called short-term memory or one type of it, which is working memory. And this is our memory that we use when we're currently carrying out a task. It's kind of like our mental workspace. It, it's memory that spans seconds to minutes in time. To give you an example, if someone asks you to subtract 26 from 42, okay, your working memory would be where you're keeping the numbers that you're storing. Most people report, you know, mental images of the numbers, one above the other, carrying a one to the ones column and things like that. This is very different than long-term memory. This is what we are, I'm focused on here. Okay, so that's the, the subject of the, uh, material we're covering. And what we want to do is in these neural models of cognition, we want to maximize the capacity of working memory, okay, over the long term. Okay, not just over a short term. And our question here is whether this new store erase learning rule can prevent the kinds of catastrophic forgetting that occur in neural net models. So let me tell you where this learning rule comes from and why it's significant. The, uh, one of the projects we're working on is something called the neural virtual machine. Okay, this is a, an emulator for a general-purpose digital computer, but that is implemented solely in neural networks. Okay, so the idea is that after you load this system, you can write one or more computer programs, literally just like you would for any digital computer. And these get loaded into, to memory, okay? And what that means in this neural modeling framework is that in one step of time, okay, the weights are changed so that the programs are learned and stored in memory. And once that's done, uh, you can run these programs just like you would normally. And the dynamics of the system, these, these neural nets we're using are recurrent attractor neural nets. And they are controlled by top-down gating of the processes, the activation spread and, and learning. And so the idea is that running a program translates in the neural networks, this network of, of neural nets, if you will, to, uh, just literally letting the programs, uh, run as the dynamics of the networks. Okay, so the critical issue here is this. Okay, how do we, with one step of learning? Okay, how do we acquire symbolic information like, uh, computer programs? How do we construct data structures and things like this? This matters a lot because in most one-step learning systems, okay, say those based on heavy and learning, catastrophic forgetting occurs. So here's an example. If I'm learning across horizontal here, the axis is the number of data structures, lists or trees that I'm storing. And the vertical axis is how much I can recall correctly. As you go along, you get catastrophic forgetting. You overload the memory and it just doesn't work anymore. Okay, so this is the phenomenon we're, we're trying to prevent here. Okay, so, um, I'm going to focus now. I'm going to take you into more of the details and so forth. But we're interested in associative memory. And I just want to make sure to distinguish clearly here between the issues and long-term memory and working memory. Okay, so typically, long-term neural network memory, think of deep learning systems, if you will, involves very computationally intense iterative learning, could take hours, days of time. These systems have very large memory capacities and we think of them as learning things for the long term. Okay, uh, and we're interested in particularly in capacity persistence. That is, the, the model doesn't lose its ability to learn new information without forgetting all. Okay, so the issues with working memory, short-term memory are quite different. Okay, so I want to distinguish these. We're interested in one-step learning. This is really the critical thing. Okay, you don't have time to use stochastic gradient descent over thousands of examples to learn something. You want to see an example and learn it in one step of weight changes. Okay, so this is very challenging, the classic solution being heavy and learning. All right, the thing that saves us is that we have a very limited working memory capacity, people do. And that's fine for the kinds of applications we're doing. Furthermore, we're only concerned with transiently storing the information and stuff. Of course, we're still interested in capacity persistence. And that's where we get to catastrophic forgetting. If you're, have a learning system, any neural network system, probably any computational memory system at all, what happens is that if you overload the memory, okay, in some sense catastrophic forgetting occurs. Okay, so with, um, deep neural networks as an example, so think of deep convolution nets using stochastic gradient descent is just one example. The problem is that as you go along, over time, you know, days, weeks, you begin to lose your old memories as you, uh, reach the capacity of the network to learn new ones. Okay, I learn a total amount. This is actually a very active, uh, this catastrophic forgetting in long-term memory is actually very active area today. Okay, well, the situation in, um, short-term memory and working memory is quite, uh, different. What we want to do is we want to lose the old memories, okay? If you move on to solve a new problem, you want to get rid of your memories about old ones and make space for the new. Okay, however, catastrophic forgetting in the kinds of working models that we're talking about here is, is just completely malignant. Not only do you lose the old memories, but you lose the ability to even learn new ones. Okay, so it's a really critical problem in the applications we're doing. The goal then that we have is, is what you see here, that we want to maximize the persistent capacity over the long term. No matter how much memory you serve, uh, you, you, how many things you save in memory by, while at the same time selectively retraining just the most recently stored things. Okay, so we're trying to do these two things simultaneously. All right, so details and, and results. I'm going to present these. I'm going to divide these into hetero associative learning and auto associative learning. Okay, and contrast the results there. Okay, so what do we mean hetero associative learning? Well, here we're learning to associate different kinds of things. So if I show you black and white pictures of sketches, say of bananas in this case, and I ask you, what color do you associate with bananas? Okay, most people would of course say yellow, right? So this is hetero associated because we're taking images and we're associating them with something different, uh, words or symbols, uh, like yellow. Hey, and the simplest neural model you can imagine for this, or pretty simple at least, is that you have an input layer here on the left of neurons that has an activity pattern, say the pixels of, uh, some image like bananas. Okay, and I'll treat this as a column vector in what follows. And we have an output layer, which is the labels, okay, yellow, for example. Again, another, um, uh, vector that, uh, will take on plus or minus one values of what I'm doing. The reason is that we compute this output vector by multiplying the weights on the connections times the input. Okay, and then thresholding it through a sign function. Okay, so, uh, the activation rule, the output nodes can be viewed as following step function that looks like this. The actual store race learning rule, if you look at the original mathematical description and stuff, it's a hyperbolic tangent. This is, we, we're using the sign here as kind of a simplified limit case with very steep gain. This is, we're using the sign here as kind of a simplified limit case with very steep gain in the function. Okay, so this is the basic first model we're talking about, input vector, output vector. Where we're using plus or minus one values. And in the results I'm about to show you, the size of each of these layers is a hundred neurons. Okay, we're using random vectors with plus or minus one values. And the goal of learning in this system is to take over time and get a continuing series of associations, okay? Each input example consists of an input pattern and the output pattern that we want it to produce. Okay, that's the P training example. Okay, so the first kind of learning that I'm going to show you is heavy and learning. Okay, this is classic HEB's rule where we take, when we want to associate an input and output vector, we take their outer product. Okay, so this is just HEB's rule, correlational learning rule for the weights. And this has, so for each pattern, we do this one time. There's no iterative learning, you see a pattern, you must learn the association immediately. Okay, and because we just add these incremental changes together with time, the order in which you store these associations doesn't matter for this model. Okay, so what we're interested in this, we go along, we we present one example to learn. We do the a step of happy and learning, then the next example, next example. And at each point, what we're going to measure is how many of the associations that have been stored. Okay, can you recall perfectly? Okay, there are other measures, but that's the basic idea. All right, so ignore these blue lines, okay? Just consider this this black line and and this red plot, these two plots. What you're seeing here is as we present memory one, pattern two, association tree. You see that the number recalled is perfect, we're recalling everything. But then it peaks out, the total number we recall, okay, we we saturate the memory. And worse, with time, it goes down and down. Okay, so the the black plot here is the number of correctly recalled patterns. It goes up and then drops way down. The red is the last, you know, how many of the last ten patterns are being recalled correctly? Okay, and you see what's happening here is catastrophic forgetting. Okay, that as soon as you exceed the memory capacity about this point, okay? The number of memories recalled correctly drops off to almost nothing. And this distance here, this vertical distance tells you that many of the patterns that you are recalling correctly are not the most recent ones. Okay, so this is a problem too. And if you look way over at the right here, okay, hopefully you can see that. I'm sorry, it's obscured on my screen here. All right, I hope you can see that. That the persistent capacity, the long term lifelong capacity has dropped zero. Okay, so this is terrible and and so the question is, what do we do about that? Well, there's an old solution to this and that's weight decay. We let the weights decay gradually during learning. And there's this new store erase learning rule. And so what we're after now is comparing this latter thing with both plain heavy and learning like you just saw and weight decay. All right, so we're comparing heavy and learning, which we just saw catastrophic forgetting. Another thing we can do is we can use heavy and learning, this is the same storage mechanism. But every time we take a step of learning, okay, we let the weights decay slightly towards zero. Okay, delta here is a constant, say point zero five. If you're familiar with regular regularization and error back propagation nets, this is very similar to that idea. Okay, so weight decay is something that might help. The second thing is the store erase learning rule. And here it is, it's basically the store part is saving, you know, using heavy and learning to store something. The erase part is just anti heavy and learning. This part that is underlined in red, okay, is given an input pattern, a sub I. This red marked part is what the network would have made what it would have output for that specific input pattern. Okay, so in effect, the minus sign says here, we're racing the old association with this new input. So we're learning a new association and erasing the old one simultaneously. It's a very simple idea. It's still one step learning, okay, we're not doing an iterative process at all. But it's no longer order dependent. So what are the results? Here are the results in this case. This is HEB's learning, the upper left alone, you can see the catastrophic forgetting. On the right, if you add decay, you can see that it has a permanent capacity of about eight, which is quite good. And if you use the store late race learning rule instead, it does even better. Okay, and if you combine these two, it does still better. Okay, so with hetero associative learning, this does quite well, much better than than just plain heavy and learning. All right, so very quickly, we got similar results with auto associative memory. Except one surprise, okay? Auto associative, we think content addressable memory. So if someone shows you some images like this picture of the Statue of Liberty and part of its mast, many people can tell you what goes there. Okay, we've associated the parts of this image with with one another. So our memories can retrieve the rest from a partial image, we can retrieve the rest of the image. Okay, so we can model this very simply as a single set of neurons, okay? With fully connected weights between them. And we're going to assume for a content addressable memory like this, very important that our weight matrix is symmetric. Okay, for this all to work, this is a dynamical system. Okay, it's using the same activation dynamics, but we start with some say partial image. Then we recompute activity, then we recompute activity, we keep doing that until the activation level stabilizes. We say it reaches an attractor point, okay? And now what we're trying to do is not to learn associations between different patterns, but to learn specific patterns and be able to recall them from from part of them and so forth. Okay, so there's only one other point to add here, that that the store erase learning rule, as it was originally conceived, has a small glitch for us and that is it can produce asymmetric weight matrices. Okay, and then we, the the model may not go to limit cycles and it's possible to fix that. You know, capital T here means transpose by just adding the transpose of the anti heavy and component to itself. Okay, and all works well, thank you, Abir, I'll finish on time. So just to summarize summarize the results, the heavy and learning alone in this model. The, you can see that it it has catastrophic forgetting as before. Heavy and learning with decay, not quite as good, but it solves a problem partially. The surprise that came was that if you stick them together, you get a tremendous boost. Okay, so this basically solves the problem that we started out with. All right, I'm I'm out of time. I just will summarize by saying that that heavy and learning, one step learning runs into catastrophic forgetting. And by combining store race learning with weight decay, we can greatly alleviate that problem. Okay, I I've had some other thing, but I think I'll stop here since I'm out of time.
Thank you so much for a very interesting presentation, Jane. If you have any question, please post it to the chat chat room because we need to start with the fourth paper to be on time, please. So next presenter, for deep learning for uniformity and texture feature extraction in oral cancer, enhance the scalar probability of number of images. Charles, please start. Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the organizers of this event for their successful work. And I thank the chair of this session, Professor Abir. And I also thank the audience and talkers for making themselves available for this session. Well, this work is a collaborative work of several universities. Charles Stewart University in Sydney, Western Sydney University, Kent Institute in Australia as well in Sydney and the University of Kurdistan, Hauller in Kurdistan in Iraq. I am Tariq Rashid, professor in AI, sitting for my colleague Ashok. Again, this work is a is a production of a team led by Professor Abir, who is chairing this session. Thank you very much and it has been privileged working with you, Professor Abir.
Thank you.
Now, the title is deep learning for uniformity and texture feature extraction oral cancer, enhance scalar probability of number of images. The agenda of this presentation, I'll go through the introduction, which includes the topic itself and the problem statement and how significant this problem in the scientific arena. And then I talk about the purpose of this work in particular. Then I take you through the state of art, which has been surveyed by the team. And it was taken the best solution and based on that best solution, the modification is done. The methodology of this work is done. And then then I go through the results and I end up with concluding the main points. And it is obvious that O C, O S C C, which is stands for oral squamous cell carcinoma. Excuse my ignorance on Latin medical technology. Is a form of cancer that originates from soft tissues of the oral cavity. This is a deadly disease if it's not detected in early stages. So it is important for us to detect it as early as possible. Now, early detection, as I say, it's important, and early treatment is important. Then the cure can be done as soon as possible. Usually, or traditionally, this work is done manually. Using analyzing microscopic biopsy images. And results vary and depends on the, you know, expertise in this area. So it depends on the human aspects as well. So therefore, it is important to have an automatic and dynamic detection so that we can reduce the problem that mentioned earlier. Therefore, an automatic approach was taken to solve this problem. And also trying to increase the accuracy with preserving the processing time of the model. So we can apply for this classification, something called confocal laser endomicroscopic images, C L E. And the deep learning is a great tool that has been used so far to to tackle this problem and tackle the feature extraction of this disease. Now, of course, a magic tool, C N A, convolutional neural trick, has been popular and has been proven to be very effective to tackle a wide range of complex problems concerning recognition and classification. Now, of course, C N A, as I said, it's a magic tool. It has as many as possible of layers. Convolution and pooling convolution and pooling convolution, so on and so forth. So you can create as many as possible layers. It's also called a deep learning, so pulling there and they're all at the end will be fully connected. Now, this technique, it has some problems, which 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 is the accuracy problem. And also, as mentioned by earlier by our colleague, Professor James, the deep learning, they have some problems, you know, time problem, you know, they take days and hours for training and sometimes they get a problem of overfitting. So therefore, feature extraction could be a good solution. If not, then, you know, the current solution that has been taken called dropout layers to avoid overfitting. Now, as I say, the main, the main object of this work, the main purpose of this work is just try to improve the accuracy. When it comes to detection or when it comes to diagnosis. And in this particular work, local binary pattern has been used plus gray level covariance matrix. So these techniques were added, these two components were added to increase the accuracy and to again, keep up with the processing time, maintain it to bare minimum. Now, C L E, as I said, which is confocal laser endomicroscopy is scaled down so that, I mean, it is kind of denoising or reducing the noise so that, you know, we managed to reduce it to half at least. And and then these images were later on divided up to patches. You know, with fifty percent overlap so that to enhance or to improve the accuracy of the classification. Now, patches were fed in twofold augmented for training and testing sessions using neural network. Then later on, CNN was worked for, was used for for feature extraction through the convolutional layers that it has. Of course, followed by the local binary pattern and gray level occurrence matrix. Then another tool, another magic tool, which is support vector machine, which was found by Vladimir Alexander Vladimir Babnik. This one was used to classify the images. Now, as I say, twofold cross validation was used just to check the training ability of the model. Then the features were combined during the fusion of patches and using patch activity and patch count map for classification of confocal laser endomicroscopy images. Then later on, we measured the accuracy using a probability score and then the processing time is measured again within the runtime of the model. And the accuracy was found outstanding. Now, looking at the state of art or looking at the survey that has been conducted by the team. State of art, we found that three previous works, they were the best. Among them was the work of Abravell and his team and work of Das and the work of, I think, Chinmi Chaporati. This is the state of art of the work of Abravell, it has three components, as you can see. As you can see, this is the process, pre-processing component, which is a pipeline, medical images are fed. Then image were resized, then remove the noise and then divide image into patches. And then later on, it comes to feature extraction and then declassification. Now, as you can see, the, the blue boxes are, are the advantages of the state of art. And red box is the downside of the state of art, you know, which they use kind of dropout layer. Now, the work that the team, our team provided is to improve on these red dots or the boxes by having local binary pattern and gray level co-occurrence matrix. So the red, the red box was replaced by LPB and GLCM. Now, this is the methodology that has been used, and you can see the, again, the blue lines represent the advantage of the method, and the green one, which has been added to the system with these two components, LPB and GLCM, to kind of, I mean, this is the feature extraction. This is kind of replacing the, the problem of overfitting or the problem of dropout layer. Now, one of the results that we found that the original image in, on the left-hand side, and you can see the enhancement of this image on the right-hand side, which is more clear. Now, again, going to the results, you can see that there were three samples of data sets. And checking the accuracy in our model, you can see the accuracy is way above the, the state of art, I should say, yes. So in first sample, you could, you can see that the gap is, is seen obviously. And in the second sample and the third sample, you can see the accuracy is increased and the classification or the classifier classified samples correctly and outstandingly. Now, again, as I say, one of the purposes of this work is to also maintain or keep up the processing time, which is important. So, and you can see the red boxes are the processing time for the proposed solution by this work. You can see that the time either reduced or slightly, a little change or a little difference between the state of art and the model that was introduced. Now, in conclusion, we added two components to replace the dropout technique to avoid the overfitting and kind of feature extraction. This made a great impact in reducing the classification error by six or seven percent at least. So, and also the classification error, reducing the risk of being false positive in the classification accuracy. So by and large, the system, you know, outperformed classification and identified those cells that has problems or cancerous cells. And also, the automatic detection was done. These are the references that I wanted to show. These are recent references. The first one, Abravell, 2017, was best among the older surveyed work that the team conducted. And the other two also, they came at the second and third rank. So I'm done. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to answer any questions. And if you have any, anything about the paper, you can also drop an email to myself or to Professor Abir to come back to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much for such a great presentation, Tariq. Any question? Can you please stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you so much. Now we move to the fourth paper, Finding Phishing and Fraudulent Websites Using Logo Detection.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, I'm going to talk about finding phishing and fraudulent websites using logo detection. I'm Matin Hosseini, researcher at Bolster. And this paper is presented, published by me, Matin Hosseini, Abhilash, Gauri Mila, and Abhishek Dubey, and Shashi Prokash. Let's, at the beginning, let's talk about what is exactly phishing. The phishing websites are the websites that trying to steal information from any users of the legitimate websites. There are several phishing active websites that trying to get the information and get the money from the different people. So by typing the URL, by mistyping, you might end up landing to the phishing website. According to APWG AntiPhishing Working Group, the number of attack each day is increasing. Recently, it increased a lot because of the COVID all over the world. And unfortunately, most of these phishing websites are in SSL certified websites that customers trust them and put their information in the original website. So during 2019, 4.2 million websites launched, and 13% more than 2018, and 323 billion losses in a lot of brands. And recently, the research shows that 42% of customers don't contact with the brands that, the related brands of the phishing website. And most of the, all, all the solutions are blacklisting and whitelisting of the phishing website. There are not a lot of real-time detection and out there. So that's why real-time detection is so important to find the phishing websites. I'm going to introduce you the, our free community website that you can go and scan your URL and see what's the position of this website. It is on real-time. And if you get the URL of a website, then it will show you it is a phish website and give you all the information that you need about the website. This is a website that you can access anytime if you want. It's checkfish.ai. Okay, let's go and talk about the main reason of this paper. We are introducing, like, we are using the logo detection in our phishing tools. What we are doing in logo detection, for example, you can see in the image, we find the logo where it is located and which logo is related to this. There are three main reasons we are doing this, because of finding phishing website, finding abuse of a logo, and copyright fragmentation detection. So the core engine that we have in our model consists of several deep learning models. One of them is logo detection. One is natural language processing. Actually, we have two natural language processing. And several other models that it's combined and become, it recognize the situation of each of website. I'm going to talk about the one parts that we find the logo in each of the websites. And that part, we get each of the website's image and pass it through the deep learning model and find the image object and we, where is the logo and which logo is related this one. And the data set that we collect is, at the time that we published this paper, was a 198, but it's increased every day. And it's annotated, a human annotated 198 brands. And we also added several augmented data to our data set. We have our own augmentation model that changes the image related to exactly, related to our purpose of making augmentation image. In this paper, we selected three different models for logo detection because YOLO is the most famous model for finding object detection. We used YOLO. It is famous because of speed and accuracy. So we first started with YOLO v3, and it's, it's proposed by Joseph Redmond and Ali Farhadi. It's based on CNN, it's in CUDA. Then there is a PyTorch version of it too, but we used the exact Darknet implementation. Then we compared this one with YOLO v4. And the YOLO v4 uses a bag of 3Ds and several bags of specials. And also, they improve their accuracy. Then we moved to YOLO v5. And this one is the updated version of YOLO v3, the PyTorch version. It is on PyTorch, and it has their own data augmentation, the auto learning of bounding box anchors. It has like a small weight file, and it is so easy for us to use that because it is extremely fast. I can show you that the comparison of the training that we have for each of these model. Here are some of the results that we got from the, from our data set for the testings. And you can see that the precision of YOLO v5 are the best. Also, the timing is so important for us, and YOLO v5 give us a very good prediction time. As a result, I can show you some of the real-world results from different brands that we can, we could find through our model. From different brand, you can see that it's easy to find the logo, and you can see the bounding box and confidence of each of the brands. And this is two more results of two other brands. And here are some of the links and references that we talked about during this, this presentation. And you can go to the checkfish.ai if you want to see the model or scan your URL. Some of the information are published in bolster.ai as a blog or detailed information about it. It's, you can find in bolster.ai. And also, if you need any information about the number of phishing or anything like that, that I got at the beginning is from apwg.org. And here are the references of the different version of YOLO. And I believe that YOLO v5 is still, is not get published. I put the GitHub that we used for YOLO v5. If you have any question, please let me know.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Martin. Any question? Okay, thank you. You can stop your sharing your screen, please. Okay, we reach to the last paper, "Detecting Phishing and Fraud websites at scale using deep learning during COVID." The presenter can start, please.
Hi, this is Abhilash, and let me start with my presentation. Before, before I jump in, that, thanks a lot for the opportunity, folks. And I've been listening to the presentation, and it's been really lovely. It's been great to hear it. So as the topic states, we would be discussing on how we can detect phishing and fraud at scale using deep learning techniques. And we want to focus during, we started collecting data and focusing on this during the time of COVID. We will talk about how the threat land, online threat landscape for this phishing and fraud detection has completely changed. I'm Abhilash Gauri Mila. I'll be doing the presentation. And here we go, right? So when we talk about the online threat landscape or phishing or scam pages, as my coworker has mentioned in her previous presentation, the one before this, you know, when people, when these attackers try to get online and try to scam other people into giving out their credentials or giving out, you know, conducting gift card scams or any elaborate type of scams, it, it can get quite dangerous. And these type of scams, we've recorded 3.4 million of them in the first half of 2020. And these 3.4 million, the reason this is special is because of what, what we've been facing across the globe. The pandemic has really hit us hard, yes. But it has also led to a whole new category of scams that have come into existence, right? Whole new category of scams, where people started selling fake N95 masks, where people started sending out fake vaccines or fake, you know, anything and absolutely everything that's related to COVID. And not just this, the threat landscape for multiple industries has changed because if, say, the theater industry has gone down and there are a lot more people who are streaming movies on their websites, websites like Netflix, Amazon Prime, and we've seen a significant rise in these scams that have been going on. And the, the problem with these, with this problem, especially with COVID and this scenario, is that the variety and the volume of the scams is too high. I mean, every day, there is a different type of scam which is being conducted by the threat actor, and every day, there is a different volume to it. Suppose that today, you see one fake vaccine being sold, but there is one threat actor in the market. And tomorrow morning, you would see 10 others spin up the same vaccine scam and selling fake vaccine to innocent people. And the reason, so usually, this is how the problem is usually tackled in the space of online threat or, you know, phishing and scam detection, right? So we start with these traditional methods where people start flagging all these pages, based on rule-based systems. And then once you pay it, I suppose they search for, say, hey, can you give me all the domains which are Microsoft in them? And once they get all these domains, they start looking, manually start identifying these domains, you know, go through each of these domains and see if there is a phishing or a scam being hosted on them. And if there is actually a phishing or a scam being hosted on them, it needs to be added to a blacklist, and then it needs to be taken down. The problem with this approach, what we have observed, is that it's very slow, and it has a lot of resources which are getting involved in this. The problem with this approach, what we have observed is that it's very slow and it has a lot of resources which are getting involved in this. And it's a very hard problem to keep track of, this is because of, again, what has changed due to COVID. You know, industries getting migrated online, more businesses coming online, different types of scams and it's just a very large variety of them. So what we did was we jumped to seek help from deep learning. And so what, the deep learning is this powerful aspect or horizontal field that can help us, you know, in the cybersecurity space as well. So what we do with deep learning inside are, what we started building out was, we started mimicking the behavior of a user. Suppose you land up on microsoft.com, what is the first thing you take a look at? You take, you're trying to visually understand the page as a user. You look at Microsoft's logos, you look at the sign-in form and then, and then you take a look at the URL. And say, hey, okay, this one looks like a Microsoft sign-in page, let me go and put in my credentials. So doing this, doing this exactly with a particular, with a machine, it has its own advantages. It's that we can use this at an absolute scale. And then it is, it is always a real time detection and there is zero human effort that is being involved to manually go through the pages and, you know, verifying them. And I just wanted to dive a little deep into the deep learning aspect of it, right? We talked, in the previous slide, we were talking about, hey, you have to visually look at the page. And how does a machine, how can a machine visually look at the page? And this is where, you know, protocols or algorithms like YOLO, YOLOv3 or V4 or V5 come into place where they. Where they start detecting logos on top of each page. And they start detecting sign-in forms and they start detecting other important artifacts which can be related back to a brand. And this is one such example from, from the previous slide, if you take a look at, this is what deep learning would do, right? It, or to be specific enough, logo detection would do. When you, when you pass a page to it, when you pass the screenshot to it, it would say, hey, there is a Microsoft logo on it, there is another Microsoft logo on it, but there is also a Microsoft login form on it. You would take all this information and then you would also take a look at the URL of, at which this is being hosted. And if the URL says. 123.com, which definitely does not belong to Microsoft, then you could, then you could put this into a suspicious bracket and say that, hey. It doesn't do so and it's not just limited to having visual content, we have also expanded it to taking in natural language processing of it. So what, what, what exactly is this natural language processing consuming or this NLP model consuming, right? So when we look at a webpage, we started scraping all the data, all the textual data on the webpage. For example, if you go to a Gmail login page or a Google login page, you would find this information saying, hey, sign in with Google account. So on and so forth, we started pulling all this information, put it into a natural language processing pipeline and then feed it into a deep learning neural net. And this deep learning neural net started associating these things with the intent of the page, it would say, hey. This page is where, when you give it this page, it will specifically say, hey, it's talking about signing into a particular form. If you give it an Amazon page, it would say, okay, this page is in particular is selling goods or it's talking about online shopping. And so on and so forth, and using these techniques, just combining both these techniques. We've added similar to the signing into the forms and, you know, online stores, we've also added a category called COVID. And this was something we just wanted to. You know, this was, this was a crux of the paper, what we wanted to show was the amount of COVID scams that were coming into circulation each month. Which has grown and this number went to a peak in the March and the April of 2020. Where people were happily sadly trying to, this was when people all across the globe started learning what COVID was and how dangerous it was and started Googling out for vaccines and the N95 masks. And that is where the bunch of these camps and phishing sites were happening, people were selling fake masks and fake vaccines on the web. And this one would compare to the total volume, add a total volume in general. So, I mean, this, this volume a little bit, this volume has been impacted by the amount of COVID scams that have been going around, so that these two numbers are correlated in nature that. The last and the last before column. And the first one does talk about the number of phishing and scam sites that have come up per day. And you would see that there were, in March 2020 alone, we have seen nearly 30,000 new phishing sites which have come up every day. And these include the COVID scams that we are talking, that we've been mentioning. And the next part we wanted to touch upon was, the new, I mean, we've been talking about COVID and how exactly. How exactly did we get this information, how exactly do we process all the data even to put it into the model? The way we did it was, we started looking at all the newly registered domains. But when there are newly registered domains, there are these authorities like Search Stream. Which have a transparency law, for suppose if I registered COVID-19 freemask.biz. It gets recorded in this log and then we took that data and we started scraping this information and then started processing it through our deep learning models. When we did, when we, when we were just collecting this information on what could have happened inside each of these domains. We've observed that the number of, you know, you would see the trend here. We started talking from, we are talking about April, May and June because this number just exploded in these months. The number of registrations for these, you know, fake masks or, you know, N95 masks or vaccine or COVID just exploded. And so did, so followed the phishing in this scam sites. And over here, we wanted to do a countrywide, we also, we found all this phishing scam, we wanted to do a countrywide distribution of what this could look like. And one quick number that jumps out is over 36% of the phishing and scam during this time was hosted alone in the United States. This is the top 10 countries from bottom up, the United States, Russia, Germany, Netherlands and so on. And if you, it's quite, just from the graphic alone, we could see that the other countries with, with, where in the line out of the top 10 countries, even if you sum these up, it would not be equal to the amount of fish that is being hosted in the United States alone. And I wanted to put a sample COVID-19 scam, so this was one COVID-19 scam that we found and we wanted to just put it out there, this was. They were selling something called a SinoVAC COVID-19 vaccine and they were selling it to users for $200. So you, usually it's, it's just, vaccines need to be stored at less than zero degrees Celsius and they cannot be sold on the web. So most of us who are in this technical community can understand that fact, but these COVID scammers try to target people who are not, you know. Technical enough to understand these and that's where our efforts were guided towards detecting these and, you know, letting people know that, hey, this is a scam and don't, don't go ahead and waste your money on that. And there is, most of this technology is absolutely free to use, you can go to checkfish.ai, just put in at any website that you want and it will pop up whether. That is a, you know, a legitimate website or if it's a phishing page, it's a phishing page, if it's a scam, what type of scam it is. And that is pretty much what I had, if you have any questions, I can take them here or if you have any questions, you can also email out to research@bolster.ai and we will be sure to respond. Thank you so much.
Thanks for such an amazing presentation, Abhilash, thanks a lot, any question? Okay, to end session 11, I'd like to thank all the audience and the speakers who attended this session, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.